It's time I'd like to call to order the July 13, 2011 zoning commission meeting. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. This time we'll vote to accept the July 13, 2011 proposed agenda.
Motion.
Have a motion by Milton Cluot.
Second.
Seconded by Bob Nance to accept the proposed agenda. Is there any discussion or opposition? Motion passes. Item four on our agenda, acceptance of the minutes of the June 8, 2011 zoning meeting.
Motion.
Motion by Milton Cluot, seconded by Howard Dalton. Any discussion or opposition? Motion passes. Item five, public comment period. This time allow any resident that wants to come up and address the commission on any item, please come up, sign in with the, on the list right here by Mr. Compton, and you'll get you three minutes to speak. Now, we will be having a public comment period on the one zoning review idea. There'll be another opportunity, or there will be an opportunity for the public to speak at that time.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, zoning subcommittee, yeah. There'll be a public comment also at the, during the zoning subcommittee report for that item. There will also be a public comment period. Okay, these, okay, folks, y'all are all signed up for item six, the zoning review of the Rain Rod Incorporated property off of Perkins Oaks Road. Okay, there's gonna be a public comment period at that, at that time when that comes up. Okay. So, okay, there's no one wishing to address it this time for the initial public comment period, then I'll move on to item six. Public hearing to amend the Ascension Parish zoning map for recommendation for approval or denial to the Ascension Parish Council, zoning review ID 2173.11, tract A1-A for Rain Rod Incorporated. Yes, sir. Come on up.
Good afternoon. I'm Randy Dornier. I'm part owner of Rain Rod LLC, and I'm here tonight to ask for your approval of the zoning change from residential to mixed use.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
I've read a lot of things and heard a lot of discussion about this project, and I would like you to tell me more about your proposed treatment plant and its capacities.
Okay, um, we, right now, there's a four and a half acre sewer treatment lagoon on the property. It's not working very well. It's definitely not up to standards. We propose to come in, bring in a package plant, reroute the lagoon through that package plant, basically clean the water twice before we let it go back out as after where it's already going through. I'm not exactly sure where it drains exactly. I believe it goes across Airline Highway and into Viuman Shack. Do you have somebody here that could answer more questions about the actual package plant?
My name's Brian Aguilar, BNA Engineering Services. To answer your question a little bit better, what they're planning on doing is doing away totally with the lagoon, the sewer system that's there now. Basically, it's pumped out of a wet well, collecting both phases of Perkins Oaks into an outdated eration pond. It's, it's an old way to treat sewer. It's outdated. The effluents definitely aren't within the standards that are required now. What they, what Rain Rod plans to do is to replace that sewer system, that sewer treatment system with a package plant, and the pond will be dissolved per DHH, DEQ. They have a process that they go through to do away with the, the treatment and the pond.
How many residences will this thing support?
I think the package plant is capable of 95,000 gallons per day. 220, 230 homes is what it'll treat.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dumos, you, you were pulling your microphone down to go ahead. You go into Mr. Cluot. Thank you.
In your rezoning, you're not proposing any homes or any, you're only proposing a clubhouse, correct?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, could you ask a question again?
On, on your property, your, your proposed development that's just, the basis of the request for the rezoning.
Yes, sir.
You're not proposing any homes?
No, sir, no homes.
Okay, you know, if the capacity is to support 220 to 230 homes, I mean, you're gonna have some sewer in the system that you proposed, the tennis club that you proposed to deploy, correct?
Yes, sir. Basically, we're just, we're just replacing the system for, to increase the size of the land. It's right, right now, if you look at a aerial map, there's a four acre, four acres of this land is, is what the lagoon takes up, and we will be doing away with that system entirely and basically replacing it with this package plant to treat the entire sewer effluent from the, the two subdivisions, the two filings of Perkins Oaks subdivision, and it'll treat a small amount of sewer coming from the clubhouse.
Okay, so, so you are proposing, I guess that's where it's going, that, that's gonna replace and, and support all of the, all of the residential areas?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cluot.
Just exactly what are you gonna do with the piece of property? I understand it's a tennis club, a tennis courts and stuff. Changing from existing zoning that it is right now to a new zoning that you're requesting is an awful lot of range that you can actually do on this land. So what are you actually gonna do with this piece of land?
Exactly that. It's going to be a tennis club with tennis courts. It'll have a pro shop, a small restaurant, you know, facility in there for the members, workout area for the members, and that's pretty much all that we're gonna have on the land. Tennis courts take up quite a bit of the, the space.
There will not be any residential at all?
No.
No residential buildings or homes, I should say?
No.
No apartments?
No, sir.
No townhouses?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for commissioners? If there's no other comments or questions for commissioners, then I'll go ahead and open this up for public hearing. This time, anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this item, please come up, sign in, and you'll get you three minutes to speak. And I think we have already some people signed up. Mr. Compton, why don't you read those names out for us if you, can you? Okay. Ms. Lucas? When you come up to, to the podium here to speak, please state your name first for the record.
My name is Lisa Lusko. I'm in Lot 31 in Belgrove subdivision. So as not to be repetitive, other neighbors here will speak to other concerns. I would like to mostly put my comments to access, access to the facility. Of course, no access, changing something to mixed use and the definition of that would be given through either Perkins Oaks or Plantation Court in Belgrove subdivision. That's a given by the very definition of what mixed use allows, public safety, the amount of cars that would be coming through a residential street. I'd like to speak to the access from Airline Highway. If we are going to base any determination or recommendation from, from you guys, as well as what we've had to research on this issue, from what has been handed in to you guys from the plot, plan, and the drawings, it shows access from the DePlessis property on Airline Highway between track J and I. Again, these are all hypotheticals because the developers wouldn't want to spend the money for wetlands mitigation, flood studies, and all the rest unless they knew that this was a go, so they don't want to actually purchase the property or the right of way from Airline Highway. So it's a cart before the horse issued. But if we're gonna go by what's proposed here, I spoke with Mr. DePlessis less than three hours ago, and know that this option has been taken off the table for the developers. Consider it hearsay, but it, I spoke with the owner of this, Mr. Ron DePlessis. The negotiations have been halted, and this is not an option for the developers. So if what we have before us is something you're going to make a recommendation on, I would strongly urge that you have some type of, not necessarily proof, right to purchase, a contract that shows definite access from Airline Highway before you would even make a recommendation, as I believe it would be negligent to do so, to go any further on either end of this until you know that there will be access from Airline Highway. Again, by definition of what mixed use is, it would not allow it through a residential street, Perkins Oaks, or Plantation Court. There are other concerns that I have. Again, my neighbors will speak to that, but should this property be rezoned and the tennis club fails, it opens the door wide open to things that will not increase our property value as the tennis club has been sold to us as it would. You know, we have the issues of lighting and noise and all the other things that will decrease our property value, but once this is rezoned, there are a lot of things that this can become. This strip of land is residential. There are other commercial options for projects such as this. The owner of this land can develop it into 10 residential lots, and we might even let them come through Plantation Court if the lots are, have acreage, and it would increase our property value. What's 10 more cars on our street for, for, for something like that? But this opens the door wide up, and I would strongly recommend you get proof of a contract in writing for access to Airline. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. and Ms. Sanders?
That's right, Ricky, get Lance to do it.
Ms. Sanders?
Good evening, gentlemen and madam. I live in Perkins Oaks subdivision, and I am wondering if the developers have done a marketing survey to find out if a tennis facility is really going to be profitable and feasible. Also, I feel like we don't have enough green space around us, and I'm wondering about the possibility of nature conservancy. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name's Robin McCarley. I live in the Belgrove subdivision on Plantation Court. I don't want to be redundant. My concerns have to circulate around the whole moving and processing of the sewage pond that exists currently, and secondly, the other concern that I have is regarding the access to the property through either Perkins Oak or White Oak or Red Oak. Originally, the way this was presented, we were gonna be coming through off of Airline, and there were some discussions and a meeting with the developer regarding how that was actually gonna be orchestrated with respect to security issues. If you notice on the original plan, there was a T intersection that was coming off between track J and I. We talked about having a gate up and everything like that, so after hours, access would be limited, because effectively with this property, you could just walk right through my, my neighbor's properties in the back there off of Plantation Court. So these are some of the issues that I'm really concerned about, particularly with respect to access and then the security issues for that access coming into those different areas. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. White?
I live in Belgrove in Lot 14, and my property is adjacent, will back up to the buffer zone that they're supposedly allowing. I oppose the rezoning of this property for any use. There's much vacant commercial property all over the parish. Why should we create one and drop it in the middle of residential areas? I appreciate the 125-foot buffer, but will it increase our security? Will it protect our security, our property values, our privacy? I don't think so, not in the long run. And with this, to address this project specifically, it's noisy, it will be light, it will be open until 10 o'clock at night, and on occasion, until 2 o'clock in the morning for social occasions, and my understanding there will be a liquor license requested. Do we need this dropped in our area? I would appreciate your voting, no. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ballinger? James?
Jim Ballinger, it's nice to, to speak to you. Thank you. I have to depend on this organization to look out for me because I don't know much about drainage or about many other things. I wonder very, I wonder if this particular request for zoning, is there something in the middle, you know? Can you do a temporary zoning for something, and if it doesn't go, you go back to the original zoning? There's so many restrictions that don't allow you to do the wise thing, just like these other people said. We really don't want to have something zoned so that you can put just about anything behind those homes over time. This particular project sounds extremely, extremely good in the telling, but the next, the next user or the next owner may not respect that. So I would oppose it from the standpoint that this new zoning would allow multifamily dwellings, which I think it does. I'm also concerned about drainage. Here again, I'm not a drainage guy, but we're very close to Viuman Shack, and as I look at a particular floodplain map, we have a floodplain that runs along the back of Perkins Oaks subdivision. We have a floodplain that runs between Perkins Road and my house, which is 18596. I happen to be in the middle, about a foot and a half from the floodplain, right? And I'm just wondering, we're gonna put this tennis court in the floodplain? And so how is that gonna affect my draining? And I don't know that. I have to ask you to, to try to protect us from that. So I do have some concerns on drainage and also on multifamily dwellings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Casey Michael. Good evening. I live on Perkins Oak Road, which is in Perkins Oak subdivision. I'm gonna be repetitive here, but I have a lot of the same concerns. I'm concerned about access on our road. We already have issues with people driving too fast, so I'm just concerned that that would get worse than it already is. I'm concerned about flooding. We do have a big drainage ditch that goes through, through our street, and the water gets really high in that ditch if we get a lot of rain, and gets very close to flooding houses already. Also, sewer is an issue on our street. Our, my neighbor has two huge holes in his front yard from the sewer. And then lastly, I'm concerned about noise, and I would really like a nice buffer if this does go through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Kubich? Kubridge? Kabbage?
Casey Kabbage, Spanish Oak subdivision. I live approximately three miles from the area being, proposed to be rezoned, and I just kinda wanna speak to actually the quality of the guys that are behind this. I've been knowing those guys for up to 15, 18 years. They are very family-oriented people, and they, just, just a lot of community in anything they do. All the things they've been involved in have actually, you know, uplifted the community, bettered the community around there. So my thing would be for this because I know they've worked with my, my children in a tennis arena, and I respect the guys, and like I said, they're all about family and community. And the talk about, you know, most of the problems that may arise in the future, I think these guys are, are well-planned out and, and looking to plan for the betterment of the whole area, and that area around. And who's to say to predict the future of what could or can't happen? If that was to say, then a lot of things that we do for the betterment of our world today would never happen. So let's go ahead and, and let this thing be rezoned and, and bring a sense of community with this tennis association they're gonna have here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Carrie Abney?
My name is Carrie Abney. I live in, I think it's Lot 20 on Man Shack Lane. My property is adjacent to the area that's going to be developed. I've had some conversations with the developer over the phone about some concerns that I had. I just wanted to go on record and, and say that I was told that there will not be a main entrance from Man Shack Lane into the property that's being developed, and I wanted to get, go on record and say that's been stated, and I haven't had an opportunity to review the plans. I tried today on the website, it was unsuccessful. And my concern is, is not so much the development of the property for the purpose that they've stated, it's just the, the additional flow of, of traffic through the neighborhood. If we are having a connection to Airline Highway, we could potentially see a tremendous amount of cut-through traffic from Airline over to Perkins through Belgrove subdivision that would be coming down Man Shack Lane and coming up, because there's quite a bit of backup on Airline and Perkins at peak time in the evening. That's my, that's my main concern. Nothing else.
Thank you, sir.
Scott Sayer?
My name is Scott Sayer. I live at the end of Perkins Oak, and the property back there butts up against this property you want to rezone. There is a little road that goes back there, and I'm concerned about it because without any kind of question about can they use that road? And if you rezone this, they're gonna use it, and I oppose that. And unless you can change that and say they can't get from Perkins Oak to that piece of property, because we're gonna be awful neighbors if they do this, because they're gonna use that road. I'm not willing to trade an up-to-date sewer system for our poor outdated, worn-out sewer system that obviously works just fine. I'm not buying it. I think it's awfully suspicious that they want to put in a multimillion dollar, whatever it costs, sewer system and get rid of our, our sewer pond, and I don't believe there's anything wrong with it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Excel? Let's see how I did.
My name's Mark Allen. I live right next door to where this tennis facility is gonna be. I'm not for it, I'm not against it. They've been very open in what they said. It's time for them to do what they said if they wanna do it. Last two months, y'all wore out deals about subdivisions with one entrance. Y'all talked about making two. Y'all talked about subdivisions that dump out into commercial buildings and what had to be done. Y'all have wore us out about gates on a property on Airline, about a school and how it goes, and who has keys, and who has emergency keys, and how you go in and out. There's three of them on this piece of property. We need to figure out what's gonna be done with those gates, how they gonna open, how they gonna close, or get rid of them. The entrance off Airline Highway, in the meeting on the 8th, y'all said y'all had no control of Airline Highway, that it's a state road. Let's see what's gonna be done, what's the turnoffs, and let's see an ironclad contract of how they gonna come across that property. Sit at Canes between 5:00 and 6:00 any day of the week, and that traffic backs up from that light across the bayou. Let's see how we gonna control that. The waste plan, sir, you need to come with me one day? That sewage plan don't work. There's human waste being dumped everywhere out there, okay? It's been that way for 11 years. But they need a plan because there's been human waste dumped there for 21 years. There needs to be monitoring, there needs to be controls, and the Corps gotta get involved in this because the runoff will go in that bayou, and nobody has mentioned the Corps' name at all tonight. My main concern is what y'all say, what happens if this tennis deal fails? I'm not against anybody having a chance. But let's get something that this is a tennis court, this is a facility, and it's not apartments and condos or something. I want them to make it if y'all approve it. Down in the deal about the buffer, they talk about 125 or 115, I'm not sure what it is. From the property line, I would like it to read from the existing buffer that's there. The buffer back in the corner around our property has moved over due to the storms and due to an agreement that was made to the original owner of this property.
Thirty seconds, sir. Thirty seconds.
Okay. In closing, I got one question to ask you. In the document that was emailed to people and posted on the website, down at the bottom page of rezoning, it's signed by Randall on 3/9/2011, and right up above it, it says match, map attached in its circle. Will y'all please tell me how this thing was signed on 3/9 when this map wasn't drawn on 6/9? Please consider real good what you do with this piece of property. If we do it, let's do it right. Let's find out how we coming off Airline, let's get the gate shut, let's find out how we gonna get rid of the human waste that's been there for 21 years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mas Canella? Greg?
My name's Greg Mascollo. I live off of Perkins Oaks. Thank y'all for letting us speak today. One of my main concerns is the access on the Perkins Oaks. There's a lot of kids that live on that road, a lot of kids. Y'all come down there and look at it. I've got grandkids that come, not that they're in the street, but you know what I'm saying. Any access there, you can go there any day. We've had some sheriff deputies out there watching, catching speeders and stuff, but I can tell you what, they start at one end, they get to that light, they gonna be up to speed by the time they get to my road. He's talking about bad neighbors. Yeah, he's gonna see real bad neighbors. As far as the light right there at Perkins Oaks, right there by the Walmart, y'all can look at the traffic instances from the state police, but I'd say in the, since the first year, there's been quite a few major accidents right there. There's been quite a few major accidents at Airline, at Perkins. Anything you do, which I know there's a lot of open land down on Airline, it's gonna be, add to the traffic, but you're gonna say, okay, I'm gonna give you an access, which now they say they may or may not have access to Airline, they're gonna get onto Perkins Oaks, they're gonna get into Belgrove, they're gonna get into a residential area, and like somebody said, you'd be there during a certain time of day, and that traffic is horrendous. We don't even leave the house once I get home because there's nowhere to get out. Not only that, but that is a flood zone. I think in one of y'all's mission statements or something, it said that the commission would try to deter building and floodplains in flood zones. I know there's been some elevation improvements out there, drainage improvements, still flood zone. And like somebody said about the Corps, wetlands and stuff like that, I don't know if there's been, if there is a wetland connected, if there's gonna be some wetlands, it's gonna adversely affect it. And something else, you can do all the buffers and all the things, and you say you wanna do this. I don't think many wildlife is really gonna pay much attention to you when you do this. You put a lot of cement in that area, there's coyotes, there's rabbits, there's nutras, there's foxes. They don't care, they're gonna go somewhere. Most time, they're gonna go in my backyard, and that's gonna be a health issue, too. And then, I'm sure these tennis people are just gonna love playing tennis in a mosquito-laden land. That's gonna be a hoop, I'm sure. So maybe y'all wanna look at what that's developing, like somebody said, a conservatory or something like that. That land doesn't really need to be developed at all. I know you can't stop property owners from developing it, but you can look at logistical ways of looking at what the property is, what it's adjacent to, and what it can be used for. I served in the governor's office during Katrina. There was a lot of flooding that we had to deal with. That was one of my main deals, is how to get this flooding taken care of.
Thirty seconds, sir.
You keep putting land on these areas and you lose your watersheds, you're gonna get that much more. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Billy?
Mr. Aguilar passes.
Catherine?
Good evening again. I'd like to, do, do any of you have the unified development land code with you with the tables? Okay. I have them with me. I brought my code with me tonight, and I'd like to just say a couple of things about the tables and what's allowed, and I think we- And I think we might be able to find a win-win for this situation in the code tables. The mixed use right now, according to the table, allows eight family, single-family units per acre, 10 duplexes per acre with a zero lot line, and 20 multifamily residential, if it moves up to mixed use. In the tables, Table A, right here, I'm looking under... I'm gonna look under mixed use, just name some things that could go here, okay? If the tennis thing doesn't fly. Animal hospitals, veterinary offices, auto and trucker major repairs, reconditioning, painting, body, fender work, upholstering, seat covering, auto truck sales, office activity, barber shops, bars, lounges, boats, boat sales, bed and breakfast, daycare, dry cleaning, exterminating, fumigating, septic tank pumping, furnace cleaning, florists, funeral establishments, kennels. Those are with dogs outside the facility, not inside. Mini warehouses, mobile homes, motels, hotels, restaurants, sales and storage of construction materials, self-service laundries, truck stops, light industrial structures and facilities, dry cleaning and printing plants and warehouses, wholesale business and storage. Okay, I looked at this map briefly under medium residential, which what it is now. Same table, Table A. If we look on page 3, let me see here. It's page 2. In residential medium, you can have, on page 2, recreational facilities, public and private, and it states under residential medium, a contractual agreement with a developer, okay? You do not have to change the zoning in this property to build a tennis court. That's really important for y'all to understand. Your zoning tables allow a recreational facility that this gentleman is talking about, public or private, with a contractual agreement, which is allowed in your master plan. And I believe that's what you need to look toward and not do this egregious thing that's being suggested by the developer. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. That's it. No one else signed up, then the public comment period on this item is closed. Gentlemen, if you'd please come back up. Give you an opportunity to answer some of the comments that were made.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And I'll try to go over my notes and answer them as they were made. Sorry, Mr. Fraser. As they were made, first of all, the duplexes deal being over and done with, that is hearsay. Because last time I talked to him, we were still working on a deal. There are, we're actually working on several options of access from Airline Highway. And as a matter of fact, there's about 900 feet of frontage on Airline Highway that backs all the way up to our property. That is for sale. So it really is just a matter of pulling the trigger on buying some of that property if that's what we want. We just don't want to do that unless we have a reasonable, you know, expectation of getting the zoning that we need. Somebody had asked if we had had a marketing survey done, and absolutely, I can tell you that this area is screaming for more recreation and more tennis courts. The Parish of Ascension has 11 public tennis courts for the entire parish right now. This would double it in just, in one go. We're looking to have four indoor courts and eight outdoor courts to start off with. Mr. McCarley was worried about the, when he looked at the plan, seeing the T at the end of the diagram. Well, that's in there because it's required by code to have a T turnaround on anything that is that long. It's the only reason it's there. If we get away without doing a T, that's fine. If y'all wanted to give us a variance on that, I have no problem with that. It's not for going either way off of the street or driveway. The one that y'all have, that y'all are looking at, with that plan, we were actually going to build a street to Parish standards coming into the road, coming all the way in. The, okay. Okay, we're not going to be open until 2:00. And we're not putting a nightclub on this property at all. It will be a pro shop. We will be lights out at 10:00. There will be times during tournaments that the lights may go on later, may stay on a little bit later. But even during a tournament, we don't put courts on at midnight, no matter how far behind schedule we might be. And, you know, if the match lasts an hour to an hour and a half, the lights are not gonna be on until 2:00. We're not gonna be running a bar until 2:00. That's just not going to happen. We do need to get a liquor license for the restaurant. We do want to be able to, you know, be a full-service restaurant, and that's part and parcel of it. And that's also why we are looking for the zoning change to mixed use. Not, I don't believe that we can have a liquor license on a residential property. If I'm wrong, then, you know, we can go off of that. Mr. Bollinger brought up a pretty interesting point. What happens if we fail, you know, we're going back? We would be willing, if for some reason we were not, if we were granted this and we were not able to get access, we'll come back here and we will ask to be, have our zoning changed back to residential medium. We have no problem with that. If we can't get the access, then we can't have the tennis club. We are not, under any circumstances, coming, going to enter our club through the neighborhoods. We are not gonna have any streets or driveways or parking lots or anything connecting from our entrance to any of the streets in these residential neighborhoods. We don't want to go through the neighborhoods. The neighborhoods don't want us to go through them. Doesn't do us any good. Like they even said, the traffic gets pretty darn bad over there. So it's really not an ideal situation for us to use those roads. These, the drainage issue that he was worried about, well, existing law protects the homeowners right now. Right now. The laws that you've got on the books. We cannot go in there and adversely affect their drainage. If for some reason we did, they can sue us. So I've got an engineer, and we're gonna make sure that doesn't happen. We put retention ponds in. We've already taken out a culvert that was causing a problem for the drainage in Belgro subdivision. And I believe that's already, you know, been proven to work pretty well. The noise buffer at 125 feet of green space, that's what we're gonna leave. It's a heavily treed area, lots of undergrowth. We're not gonna touch it. We're gonna leave that 125 feet from the back of their property lines. Now, in Belgro, those are two-and-a-half acre, three-acre lots. These are pretty big lots. And we're going another 125 feet past that. I've already addressed, Mr. Abney is concerned, and he should be, about access through the property. There will be absolutely no access. Again, it's also my understanding, from talking to Mr. Allen, that we would not, even if we wanted to, even if I were up here lying, we would not be able to access our property through the back of Belgro because Mr. Allen had granted a servitude of entrance to the previous owner, and that was for the previous owner only and not for us. So that's really a moot point. We couldn't do it even if we wanted to. Mr. Sayer, the road that he's worried about off of Perkins Oaks and a couple of other people who had said, that road will remain gated and locked, just like it is right now. When we move and put the package plant in, whatever company ends up running that package plant will need to get access, and that's gonna be the closest access for them. Basically, it's gonna stay just like it is now. It's a little gravel road that's gonna go back, this time to a package plant instead of all the way back to the pond. And they're gonna have a key, and that's what it's gonna be for. We're not accessing through that road whatsoever. The other gates that Mr. Allen had brought up on Red Oak, North Red Oak, there is a gate there that density is using that gate as well because they have got a lift station right there. Those lift stations, by the way, will also be moved. Once that lift station is gone, there's not gonna be any reason to get in through there. We'll fence it off. There will be no access through that road. There used to be a barbed wire fence that was preventing access from Red Oak. My understanding is it's been torn down. We'll be happy to put another one back up. Let's see. Let Mr. Mascherella know. These are, these are not concrete courts. These are, these are gonna be clay courts. They are actually going to drain as well as the land does now. As a matter of fact, they're hydro courts. They'll drain better. They'll have a drainage system in them, and they will be watered from underneath. We've already got well, a well on the property. It's gonna be fully able to handle it. And speaking to Catherine, I've just gotta say that if you were to deny a rezoning access based on what could possibly happen if a business fails, well, then you're holding it to an unreasonable standard. Nobody can guarantee success. I would love to be able to guarantee success on this. But if you were gonna make every business that came in to rezone guarantee that it'd still be there 15 years down the road, you'd never rezone anything. And that might be the aim of some of the people here. I'm not sure. The only thing I can guarantee is that this tennis club will provide more jobs than the sewer lagoon that's out there. And it's gonna provide more tax revenue than the sewer lagoon that's out there, right? And it's gonna provide a little bit more enjoyment for the community than the sewer lagoon that's currently. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Comments or questions from Commissioner? Mr. Clouatt.
You by any chance wouldn't happen to have a rough layout of the facility, of what you're gonna actually lay on this land? How you gonna position the courts and clubhouse, restaurants and everything? And then, I think one of the main things that I'm hearing from the citizens in the area, they're very concerned about using their roads in their subdivision. And I understand what you're saying, and you're telling them you're not gonna do it and everything. But we don't have any, there's no assurances. Like you said, yes, we can't assure that a business is gonna make or not make it. But what I'm hearing from the public is they're very concerned about the access to the property, the drainage of the property, the noise of the property, and the lighting of the property. What assurances does these people have that all of what you're saying is gonna take place if this is gonna change? If this is gonna be rezoned? I mean, I know you're saying what you're gonna do, but what assurances do they have that that's gonna take place?
Okay, well, as far as, we can speak to the lighting. We've done photometric plans. The way that, you know, the lighting has come a long way for tennis courts and sports fixtures and everything. We've got photometrics from, for a bunch of different schematics on how we would do it. The candle power is concentrated on the court. Anything that's not on the court is basically wasted. And so we're gonna go with the top-of-line stuff. We want to keep the light where it needs to be. Between these light poles that will be shining down, not only the old style that shine out to the sides, will be 125 feet of very thick woods. That should also be a pretty good noise buffer. I would even venture to say that the noise from Airline Highway would drown out most of the noise that we would make. Tennis is not a loud sport.
Do you have a layout right now?
We have, well, we do have this. We are in the, I think I've got enough for everybody up there if you like. This is, like you said, this is rough.
Yes.
Can I approach?
Yes, please. I would love to see it. Has the public been, had access to this?
Yes, sir. The public's had access to this. We had several meetings that were open to the public. And those have been at every meeting that we pass.
This is just a conceptual plan. There's no design as far as drainage goes in that plan. This is just a conceptual plan to show where the tennis courts and the clubhouse may go. It is subject to change once the drainage impact study is done.
And I think the commissioners do understand that, but it just gives them a better idea of what you are looking at in the event that, you know, as you proceed through this process. Gentlemen, you do understand, I want to go ahead and want, take the opportunity. Folks, this is, we're just, the vote that we take tonight is our recommendation to the parish council. This item, whether it's a recommendation to approve or deny to the parish council. So there's still, you know, some more of the process. The council, the parish council will have the final say on this. And they may, they may not go with our recommendation. So I want to, I want to make that clear to everybody while I have the opportunity to do so.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sadler.
I don't know where to start. Obviously, there's been a very high degree, sir, this afternoon, of public negative sentiment. I took copious notes, and I see 12 individuals who live on the five affected streets, Perkins Oak Drive, Red Oak, White Oak, Belgro, and Manchak Lane. And I saw one individual that said you were good guys, and he said he lived three miles away in Spanish, Seven Oaks or Spanish Oaks, wherever. You said that the, as a developer, that it's hearsay about the negotiations that broke down on tracks I and J on US 61 as far as access is concerned of the duplexes property. Why is it not equally hearsay when you say they have not broken down and everything's fine? And how can I decide who, I don't even want to word telling the truth. You're probably both telling the truth, at least in your own mind, but it's very difficult to deal with. When we couple all this high sentiment, negative sentiment with some other issues, I get to the conclusion of there just seems to be too much trust expectation here. And there is a law that exists that says that this property is currently zoned medium residential. And obviously, you're trying to get a variance to, or get us to change the zoning to mixed use, mixed use one, I guess. There's a lot of trust when you do those things. I know you say you've done a business plan. It won't fail. Maybe it will, maybe it won't. 95% of all new small businesses fail, and that's in a good economy. But I also look at this besides trust expectation as what I call death by a thousand paper cuts. I will admit to you, sir, I'm not on these five streets, but I'm not too far away up Old Perkins Road in Greenbrier Estates. For me, with that subdivision. And I have watched, as a citizen, very, very, you know, intently, how all kinds of businesses have cropped up along there from the railroad tracks to 61. First thing you know, the complexion, as it already is, is changing into more of a commercial area than a residential area, and people are concerned. With this new development, if approved, my next point would be it sort of looks like a pincer movement. Because now you've got development coming behind these folks, and you've got it on Old Perkins Road, and you've got it on US 61, which is the Airline Highway. It's like just a big old squeeze play. And I just have to say, I continue, why do we have zoning laws? We have zoning laws to protect things from like this, quite frankly, sir, from happening. Now, I've had some discussions about the packet with some folks. And on this commission outside, I walked around a little bit in the subdivision areas affected. And I'm surprised there's not even more people here than just the 10 or 12 that did testify. But I believe this is, and the classic test conditions, I've been told by people, a lot more expert than me, that it's not really spot zoning. So maybe the chairman or whoever would allow me to call it pseudo-spot zoning, as far as I'm concerned. Because to me, that's exactly what's happening. We're gonna, if we agree to this, we're gonna be saying that you can go ahead and do this. And I think all the points brought by these citizens are quite excellent, particularly the points about if the business were to fail. It is open to all the things that was testified. You know, I was gonna say that, and I don't want to be redundant, but bars, lounges, the furnace cleaning, the septic tank pumping situation, livestock, townhouses, truck repair places, et cetera. And you might say that we need to stimulate the economy. That sounds like a great idea and everything. But again, it's back to this trust expectation. How can you legitimately do something when none of us have a crystal ball and know what's gonna happen in the future? To me, that's why we have... To me, that's why we have zoning laws. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dalton.
First of all, let me say that I would love to see a sewer treatment plan in that area because those sewage ponds are not working, have not worked for some time. The concerns that I have are the Red Oaks Drive, White Oak Drive, and Red Oak Drive. I have some limited concerns about Man Shack Lane. Because if you don't own the land, you can't control the access. And I'm very concerned about, from a safety issue, what would happen if, and again, if there's traffic on Red Oaks Drive or any of these others, because it's bad enough as it is. And it's difficult enough to get out on Perkins Road from these subdivisions. I know because I live in it. Having said all that, I'm concerned, I'm absolutely convinced that the lighting and noise and any potential noise and the buffer and all that can be adequately addressed. That's not my concern. But you said, and if I remember correctly, you said that you had the potential to purchase a 900-foot frontage on Airline Highway. Did I misunderstand you?
No, there is 900 feet of frontage that's for sale.
Okay. The potential is there to buy.
Yes, sir.
And I think you said something, all you had to do was pull the trigger on it, so to speak. I want to come back to that in just a second. This little plaque that you passed out to assuring the possible location, there's a sewage treatment plant called STP in what would be the, call it the easternmost corner of the property.
Yes, sir.
And you've said that you would want to use Perkins Oak Drive to access that treatment plant. Well, if that's where the treatment plant's going to be, please, I see no reason why that treatment plant could not be accessed from the potential, from the possible Airline Highway access between tract J and I. So then your natural buffer could potentially protect the Red Oak Drive as well. But again, that's not a guarantee. And again, I'm concerned about the safety issue. Trust me, I would love to see a treatment plan out there to take care of that whole area. But I'm concerned about potential life safety issues. And we don't need any more traffic on those roads, however tenuous that might be. So going back to the 900-foot frontage piece of land you mentioned, if that's available, then why don't you put your clubhouse on that? Because I think most of that land along Airline Highway is already zoned commercial and use this back area just for the tennis courts. That would solve a lot of issues for you and a lot of concerns these residents in these areas that have, and a lot of concerns that I have.
Okay, well, frankly, we would not be able to afford all of that land. We could, we could afford one tract, all right? And we'd have to adjust our business plan accordingly to that. But we could not, we couldn't afford it and still be viable. As far as getting to the sewer treatment plant from whatever access we have from Airline, I'm not opposed to that at all. If that would, that would make the neighbors, you know, that much more confident. We can, we can fence off where the gate is right now off Perkins Oaks as well.
But again, I think you missed my point. Having that buffer zone not suitable for building does not prevent you or any subsequent owners from tying to those streets. That's no guarantee. That's a, I mean, I believe you're going to do what you're saying. I have no doubt that you're an honorable person. But that's not a guarantee that there could not be a connection to those streets. And if there's no guarantee, that means it's going to happen sooner or later in my book. I mean, I would like to support you on this because I don't, I think this is a good thing. It would provide a lot of useful recreation. But I'm concerned about the potential for access through those subdivisions. That really concerns me to no end.
Is there, could we put a guarantee in writing? Is there, is there a remedy for that?
Well, I think it would, but it's something called a PUD. And that's not what's before us tonight.
Right, well, we had looked at the possibility of doing a PUD. This was back before April, April 13th meeting. You had a meeting on whether to even have PUDs or not. And since the, the future of PUDs was up in the air, we decided let's, let's err on the side of caution and go with the zoning that might still be there by the time we got to, got to the meeting.
I understand your dilemma. I'm done.
Mr. Clouat?
Sir, after looking at your sketch, proposed sketch or rough sketch, I noticed you have 14 tennis courts. But I also noticed there's a lot of vacant land around on that facility. Is those, is that land going to be eventually turned into tennis courts? Or are you going to have other buildings, other business-type buildings placed on this land? That's a lot of land, vacant land, that you have that you could possibly be doing something else with it that you allow, that would be allowed to do if the zoning was changed?
Right, no, we're not going to have anything else on the project except for the clubhouse and indoor court building and the tennis courts.
So you're not going to do anything else with the vacant land that's there?
We could possibly build more tennis courts if, if the demand meets it. But no more, you know, buildings or office buildings or anything like that that you're talking about, no.
What guarantee does the citizens in that area have about that? And I, and I sympathize with Mr. Dalton about, I'm not saying you're not an honorable man that you're going to do what you're going to say you're going to do. But so many people says that and wind up in a bad situation.
I understand, sir. But a PUD really wasn't an option for us at the time, which we would have, we would have done.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Dumas.
You know, I mean, we keep asking for a guarantee and what have you and we forget that this is a straight rezoning. I mean, we're simply asking, you know, we're looking, simply looking at this piece of property. Is it going to be rezoned and what have you? All of the commitments that this property owner is going to make, and I have no doubt you mean what you say, they're not going to be enforceable by the, by the parish. They'll be enforceable by the people through civil action if they so choose. If we were not contemplating eliminating the PUD ordinance, you know, the purpose of the PUD is precisely to do the kind of things where you could look at a development and impose the right enforcement procedures to ensure that what's being presented is there. But I don't blame this person for not wanting to come before us with a PUD because I've heard, I've heard several of, of the commissioners say that they're never going to approve a PUD. So why even bother to apply for a PUD? I mean, it is what it is. And I think that, you know, we need to, we need to quit asking for, for a guarantee when there is none to be had on a straight rezoning. We need to review this application on its merit and make, and bring it to our head and make a decision, one way or the other. We're, we're going to make a recommendation to the parish council tonight and we need to just move forward. Personally, I think that this gentleman is offering the community an awful lot of, an awful lot of benefits. You know, that's where a pond needs to go. It's unhealthy. It's, if the gentleman had said that this human waste literally dumped there alive and untreated, you know, it's a hazard, it's a health hazard that needs to be dealt with. You know, whether he gets his access over Airline Highway or not, I think it's material. I would hate to see this, this piece of property be developed in any way without access to Airline Highway. But on the flip side of it, it is, it is zoned what it is today and someone could come in here and partition this land and, and develop a subdivision and extend Red Oak, White Oak, and Perkins Oak and build more homes, which would just create probably more traffic than the tennis court would at the wrong times to boot.
Your point is taken, Mr. Dumas. And I think legal counsel would agree that straightforward zoning we cannot, is not, or conditional zoning is not allowed. So yes, we do need to, we do need to take action on this item as it's been presented to us. Gentlemen, do appreciate your, you know, giving us this extra information. I wish you would have gotten it to, or staff would have gotten us something like this, would have had a little more time to actually review it. That's, at least it would have given us a little better idea. Mr. Clouat, I think you had.
I've got one more question. Have you contacted RM Corps of Virginia? Have you all met with them that, what you can do and what you propose to do on that piece of property? Have you all met with them? And what was their, what did they say? What was their answer?
We've had a wetlands determination done and he has filed it with the Corps. It's my understanding it could be anywhere from 30 days to 360 days before we get a response. But it has been done and it has been filed.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners? All right, there are no other comments or questions from commissioners, then we'll go ahead and, what's the wish of the commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sadley.
I move to deny the request to amend the Ascension Parish zoning map from RM to MU to accommodate this proposal.
I second the motion.
I have a motion to deny the request to rezon this property from medium-intensity residential to mixed use. Would you state your reasons for it again, Mr. Sadley?
Well, you know, I spoke for a long time. We could do all of it again. I do believe, as I said, that this is a form of spot zoning, even if it doesn't qualify for an official definition, that it would be on all sides. I do believe that this is producing for the residents involved a sort of a pincer movement. I do believe it's death by a thousand paper cuts because as we continue to do that, as I mentioned, even on my own street, we've got real estate, we've got dentist office, we've got law offices, we've got snowball stands, we have marble fabrication units, we've got people screaming all the time in my subdivision that can't sleep at night because of the noise of the marble fabrication unit, et cetera. I think we have zoning, quite frankly, sir, ordinances and rules for a reason.
I have a motion to deny by Dan Sadley, seconded by Milton Clouat. Discussion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, again, I come back to the safety issue. I take Mr. Dumas's, Mr. Dumas's point about potential residential development that could have a varying degree of density that would increase in traffic through the neighborhood, but it, that traffic would be residential traffic. If there is, if that land is developed for residential of whatever density, that's got its pluses and minuses, as does this commercial development. So I'm really down to the, which evil do I choose to embrace? We have to act on this tonight to make a recommendation to the council. And I just have grave concerns about the, the traffic potential. I realize it's going to be traffic, but if it's traffic from a residential, that's different from commercial traffic. So.
Okay. Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, then we'll go ahead and we will vote. Commissioner Dalton.
This is, this is a, a motion to deny, or, oh, excuse me. The motion is to recommend denial to the parish council.
I'm going to have to vote yes.
Commissioner Barrow. Commissioner Dumas.
No.
Commissioner Nance.
No.
Commissioner Clouat.
No, this is a motion recommending to deny, right?
Yes.
I vote for the motion.
Okay.
I vote for the motion.
Mr. Sadley. Commissioner Essner.
No.
Commissioner Zerazua Graydean.
Let me get to vote, Mr. Chairman.
That's what I'm trying to see.
This is a first.
Not, no, it's not.
It's close.
Yes.
Yep, that's just what y'all did to me.
That's why you make the big bucks.
That's right.
Big, well, those big bucks, yeah.
Don't go buy too much coffee with it.
All I can do is buy a hard time with it. That's it. And that, and those, those come free these days anyway, so. I've got, I've got my share of concerns along with this, so I'm going to have to vote yes on the motion. As I said, gentlemen, this is a, simply a recommendation to the parish council. And of course, they're going to get the same information that we've gotten and you'll have, you'll have that opportunity to make the same presentation to them. So the motion, the motion passes.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, sir. Item seven, new businesses. Are there any items of new business that the commissioners wish to bring before the full body? No items of new business?
No, new business.
Oh, no. Item eight, there are no items of unfinished business. Item nine, our zoning subcommittee report, which, Mr. Sadley, you chaired the last month's zoning subcommittee and the subcommittee is bringing forth a recommendation.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Which if you, you want to go ahead and make your subcommittee report and then discuss the PUD overlay or the recommendation?
Okay, we'll do the report first and then the discussion. The zoning subcommittee met actually two times leading up to what we're going to discuss this afternoon. And if you recall, two months ago, we didn't have a quorum, but we did discuss. The last time, we did have the quorum, so we discussed and actually were able to do action. This, for those not aware, references the PUD overlay, LDC Code 172038, better known as the SPUD, PUD, TND overlay zone. During the public comment period from both of those meetings combined, I'll give some highlights. We heard from the public that they believe the ordinance, as it currently is written and exists, discriminates against both developers and landowners when there is a condition of subdivisions creating lots less than or equal to 10 acres in side, in size. I believe that specifically relates to subsection C., point 3, point G. Other comments were things like, anything greater than three acres must be a PUD. And folks were, very many folks at the meeting, both of the two meetings were against that. The PUD overlay impedes a property owner's ability to give, for example, greater than five one-acre lots to a property owner's children or grandchildren. I heard that the ordinance would allow, for example, five subdivisions of three acres each, but not more. Another comment made was an examination of the PUD overlay map, questions the logic of how anyone can even carve out such a small piece of Ascension Parish for a PUD overlay and then exempt everyone else who lives elsewhere in the parish. So, Mr. Chairman, after hearing all this testimony from at least 10 different individuals over the two combining zoning subcommittee meetings that covered the subject of the PUD overlays, that led to a motion made by Mr. Dalton, actually some comments first and then his motion, that he felt, quote, "At best, the PUD overlay is confusing. It's contradictory." It, meaning the PUD overlays need to go away. The PUD overlays cause more questions than they solve. I will also report other commissioners present concurred with those, with his comments with similar sentiments. And at that point, Mr. Dalton motioned, "I will make a motion to remove the PUD overlays in Ascension Parish wherever they may exist." Commissioner Nance seconded that motion. The motion then passed unanimously.
Okay. And therefore, you're bringing that recommendation forward tonight to the full commission to vote whether or not to hold a public hearing?
If you don't want to discuss anything in the report, we can go right to that.
Okay, well, I think, I think Commissioner Nance.
Do you need to move?
Commissioner Nance had something he wanted to bring up, so I'm allowing him as the, as the zoning subcommittee chairman to go ahead and bring that up.
That's fine, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, due to health concerns, I'm going to have to resign as the zoning subcommittee chairman. I just don't feel like I can do an adequate job based on some health problems I'm having. It's a point in time, so it's a point in time.
Commissioner Sadley, last month, I'd asked you if you would take on the, as acting chairman of the zoning subcommittee. Will you, can you continue to do that, take on that responsibility?
Yes, if that's your wish, I will, I will chair the committee.
Therefore, you are the appointed chairman of the Therefore, you are the appointed chairman of the zoning subcommittee. If you, Mr. Chairman, if you, if you care to continue, we can move on to the subcommittee's recommendation.
Okay, very fine. We're here, of course, to vote on whether or not to hold a public hearing on the abolishment of the ordinance. Again, I repeat, that's the SPUD, PUD, TND overlay zone ordinance, 17-238. I believe you'll find that on page 44 of the Land Development Code.
I think we had a couple of people that didn't want to speak on this item, so I do want to give them, if there is someone, if these, these folks do wish to address the commission, I would give them the opportunity to sign up and address the commission.
Mr. Chairman.
This is a point order. I mean, this is subcommittee reporting, we're going to make a motion to hold a public hearing, correct?
Correct.
In the interest of time.
So we are actually, we're taking action on an item, and therefore, I mean, you have to give the public the opportunity to, to address it. I mean, I think we've got three or four people. I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's really going to hinder our time.
I just thought it was, it's a new.
It's, it's, it's a simple courtesy that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just thought it would have been more appropriate that they speak at the public hearing, because we're just voting to have the hearing, correct?
That is correct. I said, it's just, it's just a courtesy, you know. First, first individual.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Charlotte Johnson. I'm a resident District Two, and the PUD overlay has been no secret for District Two and District Three. I have some concerns, you know, with the, the amendments that were brought forward with the Planning Commission, which in was about a PUD overlay issue, and it was removed from that agenda. My concern is that the people, the voices of the people have said over and over that we want the PUD overlays removed. It does not protect our property rights. We want it removed, and we come to find out at the Planning Mission that perhaps the, with the homeless house, they were going to do it for a certain individual or development, and that's wrong. If it was, it, I don't understand the ideology of administration or the staff, and I'm concerned with that. The wish is for the overlay to go away, just like with the homeless house. They can't do what they want with their property because of the overlay. We can't do what we want. We want it gone. My other concern about PUDs, and I found it interesting that the commission, members of the commission would bring up that for the item earlier, that a PUD was actually an option, when the resident is already medium residential and the developer can do what he wants, he can put his facility in with a contractual agreement. I don't understand why staff and administration take the burden off of the resident and put the burden on the developer. I don't know why we keep going back to PUDs, which do not protect the residents. So I would ask the commission, again, hold the public meetings about the PUD overlay because the people want to speak. We don't want it in our districts. We want it removed.
Thank you.
We want to thank the members of the commission for their continued service, for working with the public, for listening to our concerns, and for addressing this failed overlay. It is timely, and that the same evening we learn about the homeless house project being delayed, that this overlay is on your agenda tonight. It covers large areas of District One, Two, and Three, and requires that any development over three acres must be developed as a planned unit development. This restricts both the individual property owner and the developer. Under purpose, page 44, the PUD overlay supports the concepts of compact or high-density development, walking, cycling, and transit, or public transportation, as an alternative to driving, a variety of housing choices to create a diverse community, attempts to create neighborhoods where people use existing services and facilities. The PUD overlay requires that only five or less divisions of property can be made for family partitions of not more than three acres each, or the development shall be subject to the overlay. Planned unit developments or PUDs, section 17604, Appendix Six, page four states, quote, "May depart from the normal procedure standards and other requirements of the other sections of the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. Current code is set aside, and developers privately negotiate and design development with the planning staff. Most importantly, the removal of this overlay does not prevent any property owner from getting a permit for a planned unit development, small planned unit development or traditional neighborhood development. It does, however, discriminate greatly towards property owners in District One, Two, and Three who are subject to this overlay. The discussion was conclusive, and the decision by the zoning subcommittee was unanimous. Please place the recommendation to the parish council of this removal of the overlay on your agenda next month for a public hearing, and thank you."
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I was also in attendance at the subcommittee meeting, and Mr. Dalton, I was there when you made that recommendation and made the statement, and I was glad to hear what you said about the PUDs and the problems that they've caused. We've heard it all over the parish, and a couple of friends that I have that live in that area, one of them has a couple hundred acres. He has approximately 10 kids. He'd love to be able to give all of his kids some land. Under the current overlay situation over his property, he's only allowed to give five of his kids a piece of property to develop. They came here, they've been in the parish for years, they like the concept that they could give property to their kids, they could live on the land and have the family concept, the family partition. It's been a dream of theirs, they live it, and now this overlay over their area is restricting them. It's discriminating against him and his family, but a developer can come in and do just about anything he wants to. I think it's wrong, and I'd appreciate it if y'all would please see it fit to send a recommendation to the parish council to remove the overlay over these people's properties in that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all, and good evening. We'll be real brief and just say I'm also in, in support of and favor of whatever steps the commission needs to take to get the PUD overlays and the PUD ordinances abolished. They are creating more problems than they're helping solve, and so I'm just here to support everybody else and urge y'all, if it takes a public hearing first at a, at a zoning meeting, and, and then from there it progresses to the full council, so be, whatever steps it takes, I'm in support of, of making that happen. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. The last one. Okay. All right. All right, is there any other comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we send the recommendations of the zoning subcommittee to the full commission for a public hearing.
I have a motion to, to hold a public hearing. I want to state that as far as next month's meeting.
Yes, sir.
Next month's meeting, by Milton Clouat, seconded by Bob Nance. Discussion. No discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Dalton.
Yes.
Mr. Barrow.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Nance.
Yes.
Mr. Clouat.
Yes.
Mr. Sadler.
Yes.
Mr. Estenorn.
Yes.
Ms. Zerazua-Gradyen.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 10, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Milton Clouat, seconded by Dan Sadler. Any discussion or opposition? We're adjourned.